Now roll call the members, please.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Heron, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Breton, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Kirby, at large.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, we have the agenda presented to you. Do we have most to approve, or do we have amended or anything?
The only thing we have is Mr. Phil Hall will be able to be here.
Okay, alright. Alrighty, we need to approve the agendas presented with exception of Mr. Phil Hall being here.
Summing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
He's your second, any discussion? All fair and open, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item on the agenda, the citizen's expression period, and I'm going to see if it's timed out, so I'll bring it back up. Uh, I'll read this short statement here, and we will go right into it. The citizen's expression period is upon meeting, where anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, where you're from, the county, and what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to any things you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up, and I believe Mr. Larry Vickers has signed up, he's on our agenda here to speak. We have no particular order, we just ask that you take turns to speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close citizen's expression. So with that, we are in citizen's expression, Mr. Vickers, if you'll come, please. Good morning.
Good morning. Guess I get to be first.
Yep.
Well, I'm Larry Vickers, I'm in Nicholsville, and I just resigned from the Keith Park NRA the first year, and Keith, and Jeff Kegler's going to take that over. So it's been fourteen years, I did four, half of Joe Lee, ten as president for the last ten years. We had quite a few accomplishments up there. We totally renovated the baseball field, put in Wi-Fi, took a lot of damage, treasured down around the trail, built a shelter, a parking place for handicapped, and paved that. And, uh, one of the main things, I think, is a good relationship we've had with the county for the last eight or ten years. It's been great, you guys have supported us good, and on the side, we have for myself and the park, we thank you for that. With that, I want to turn it over to Jeff, he's going to do the presentation, give you the detail of what's happened at the park this year, and what the, uh, what we're looking at in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Well, you've served well, and I really appreciate what you've done, and I think it's been a, it's been a great accomplishment, what you've served, or you and Joe Lee, and Sarah, we've all done that, because, so, we do, we always watch you do that. I know it paid well, so.
Yeah, I did. Paid well.
It paid real good, isn't it? But it is, and people like you, and volunteer people do these things, and you'll be sore to me as we do with.
Thank you.
But I'm sure a good predecessor will be, will be fine, too.
Yeah. I got a good man, just thank you, keep taking it up.
Thanks.
I feel comfortable.
I'm Jeff Kegler from Nicholsville. As Larry told you, he's stepped down as, at the park, and I will be taking his place. I've got for you, for you guys, whoever may want one, a printout of some of the tasks that take place at the park, and a list of the people that perform these tasks. Some are ongoing, some are just one-time tasks, but this is, uh, just to give you guys an idea of what it takes to get things accomplished out at the park. Okay, one. How about if you just, you want to scroll through?
There we go.
Busy, what are you doing? Well, it works like everything else, and it goes, it works, I guess. Alright, so, okay, for the past twenty-two years, Scott County has had a world-class park at Nicholsville, okay? And it's a park for everyone, kids, students, adults, senior citizens. We have baseball fields, both little league and high school. Uh, we have an asphalt basketball court, we have, there's school outings that take place there, we've got playground equipment, an amphitheater, we host, we're the host facility for Nicholsville Days. Twin Springs has its Haunted Ghost Trail, we have picnic areas, we have a one-mile walking trail, there's a war memorial honoring veterans, and we have the Gold Star Remembrance on Memorial Day during Nicholsville Days. We have senior, uh, we rent out the senior cabin for our anniversaries, birthdays, weddings, class and family reunions, senior meetings, business meetings, et cetera. Okay, could you scroll? Okay, so, that's just a picture of that. That's when the park was being built, twenty-two years ago, it's, uh, everybody you see in that photo's volunteers. Scroll to the next one, please. Alright, so the rental prices, that's a quick reference of the rental prices. We have, uh, only increased our rent one time, and that was in two thousand nineteen. In two thousand nineteen, we have, uh, we had over, an estimated six thousand people use the park, and of course, with COVID in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, it has affected our, our rental, uh, and, uh, as far as income. Click to the next one for me. Go ahead, yeah, click, yeah, roll again. So the revenue and expense history, you can see in two thousand nineteen, we had a one hundred and twelve rentals. The income was fourteen thousand sixty-one dollars, expense eight thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars. Twenty twenty, we had forty, we dropped down to forty-eight rentals with an income of forty-three hundred and eleven dollars and an expense of ten thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Now, within those years, there was a forty-one hundred dollar grant from you guys for renovations that we did, uh, that's the discrepancy there. Twenty twenty-one, we had seventy-seven rentals, so you can see it's starting to come back up, uh, with a income of seventy-two hundred and ninety-one dollars and an expense of fifty-one hundred and forty-eight dollars. And in twenty twenty-two, our rental revenue, as of January thirtieth, is five hundred dollars for a total of six rentals, and most of those rentals were not pro, you know, were not reserved a lot of time ahead, so we can see a trend maybe in people getting back out post-COVID. We also have fifty rentals at this time reserved for the twenty twenty-two season. Alright, next slide, please. Next, scroll again. Alright, so the senior volunteers maintain the park. Scott County telephone provides insurance, I mean, Scott County provides insurance, water, telephone, electric power, electrical power, grounds maintenance, and cabin cleaning, and minimal maintenance support. Scroll again, please. Volunteers provide, uh, you know, the majority of the maintenance and support. Now, and we've had ample volunteers in the beginning, twenty twenty-two volunteer issues that we have, we've got senior members that are in operational low, older folks are getting unable to work, and we have a mortality toll, too, we're losing a lot of the people that were originally associated with the park. We do need volunteers for planning, repair, and, uh, plant, repair, and oversight, and park, park maintenance. So, and the only three options we have are with the volunteers and the Scott program, which, that's the way it's going right now, and it's going really well. And if that, if it gets to the point where the volunteers and the Scott program can't keep up the park, then the only alternative we have would be to turn the county, uh, turn the park back over to the county. Okay, next one, please. Okay, so coming up, we've got seven major renovation projects. We got the senior building, uh, that, that we've completed, the senior building, the concession stand, amphitheater, the little cabin, the shelter number one garage, shelter number two, the wellhouse, bridge wall, concrete chain link fence. Now, all that stuff was pressure washed, either stained, the chinking was, uh, updated on some of the log structure, uh, the bridge wall, the concrete was painted, the chain link fence around the ball fields was painted. Next slide, please. And that's some picture of the old, the, the, the pre, uh, pre-renovation, you can see the weathered wood, the dark. Okay, scroll, please. Now, that's after post-renovation, you can see the, the woods refreshed, lightened up, new, uh, new cellar. Go ahead. So, so the recommendation that the, the park board wants to put forth is that we keep working with the Commonwealth Attorney Scott program and continue the maintenance projects. Now, some of the maintenance projects that we have coming up are to paint the concession, uh, concession stand, paint the little cabin, stain the little cabin deck, weed eat below the baseball field, that's ongoing every year, all that needs to be taken care of, the weed eating, and Scott works, helps out considerably with that, repair the press box steps, uh, the school, uh, maintenance is going to help out with that, uh, they use that press box for high school baseball. They will repair the baggage cage also, change the American estate flags, that's ongoing every year, after about a year's use, they get tattered. Uh, we're going to install LED lights in the concession stand restrooms, uh, cut out the fence row between Colbertson's and Keith Park, remove logs, Scott program helps with the cutting of the fence rows and removal of logs, and building is also applied for a, a DCS grant for hard surfacing pathways. Go on to the next slide. So we're in the process right now of looking at, if you see that yellow marking I made on my screen clip there, uh, we're in a process right now of writing up and requesting for quotes. Concrete, and, and concreting those, that yellow marking, and that will lead from the little league, uh, press box all the way out to the circle, okay? And on down past the concession stand and tie it into the concession stand parking lot. Now, that's approximately five thousand square feet of, uh, concrete, considering we, uh, you know, we maintain the whole, uh, thing eight foot wide, and eight foot wide would still give us enough, uh, of a surface to back a pickup down there, and, you know, for landscaping purposes, and it's more than ample for people, uh, traffic to pass. Now, up until now, we've had no way of getting wheelchairs out there except for the gravel path, and that can be tedious for some folks. Okay, so, and now, some of the economic impact, uh, that the park contributes to the town of Nicholsville, if, we have about six thousand people use the park in two thousand nineteen, that's more than fifteen thousand people use the park. And I think, a decrease in the, in the use would have significant economic, economic impact on small community like Nicholsville. Lost park revenue that could potentially generate over nine thousand dollars annual revenue, and that is one hundred percent returned back to the Keith Park in operating funds. Any decrease in patrons' participation would result in a decrease of revenue and eventually expenses that would have to be picked up by the county. But like I said, we, the trend seems to be an upward trend of rentals, uh, post-COVID, we hope. So does anybody have any questions?
Anyone? You're in court.
Great, appreciate that.
Thank you, guys, for your continued support.
Thank you for volunteering to do that, Jeff, it is appreciated, and, um...
If you'll see baby, she can get an implant, so I'm in his office.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
Go on.
Alrighty, anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I'm Roger Carter, I'm chief of fire and rescue, and also the president of Scott County Rescue and Scott County Fire Association, so, we just stopped in to give you some numbers from two thousand twenty-one on, uh, you know, where we're at, how things, uh, call volume went and things like that in, uh, two thousand twenty-one, so, Dave and Wendell here come from Scott County, Nicholsville, so, uh, in two thousand twenty-one, this is, uh, there was three thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine incidents in total for all three agencies, so, that's average of eleven calls per day.
Say that number again.
Say that number again.
Three thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine. So, average of eleven calls per day in Scott County for EMS. And just sort of point the direction we're heading in right now for January for all three squads, there's two hundred and eighty-six run in January this year. So, we're busy.
Yep.
Uh, one of the big ones that's on here, that I don't know how we got to the point we got to, and yes, it didn't happen years past, but it happened a lot, man, and it's a lot of man pile a lot of wire while, uh, running around, is the CIS that we're doing now in Scott County. Last year, in the CIS, and that just means we went, uh, pick somebody by the floor, put them in a bed, or got them up wherever they're at, put them back in the car, or whatever, three hundred and fifty-three. So, that's kind of wide, and some of that fire department responded to as well as the EMS, so EMS is tied up sometimes, fire department too, here.
And all of that's COVID-related. I mean, they, people don't want to go to the hospital, they want us to come out and help them, okay?
You don't get paid?
We, we don't get paid, I mean, we have to transport someone to get paid.
Yeah, thanks, have a turn of wheel.
Unless we charge a flat fee for coming out and helping somebody out of the floor, you know, so, insurance don't pay that for people.
I've not got, completed all the fire stuff, but there's, right now, there's seven hundred sixteen fire incidents in the system for Scott County, which is average of two per day, so if you take both of those for the first responders in Scott County, that's four thousand five hundred and seventy-five total calls right now in Scott County last year. For average, thirteen per day. So...
To tell you a little bit about how much we run our truck, we, we've all got more than one ambulance that we run, you, we, we purchased some new ambulances, you all did last year, and, uh, we've already got probably twenty thousand, I agree, going on down, it's twenty thousand miles.
Yep.
Well, you're going up to, you're going through the roof.
Everything's going up, but...
Everything goes up except for reimbursements, and this went down, so, uh, things like that's how it works out, and, you know, the other part of that is, is, you know, the patients pay, you know, if they go, copay at twenty percent and things like that, that's way down, because we're just unable to afford it right now, you know? If they got Medicare and not go to secondary, then their copay's around two hundred dollars. Uh, depends on which part of it they got, whether it's a human or whatever, but it's somewhere between eighty and two hundred dollars on copay. That part's way down, just people can't afford it, you know, groceries, things are so high right now, and gas is high, and, uh, and more people out of work right now, even though there's twenty times their corner, but...
Yeah.
Uh, but, the crews right now, Scott County with three trucks, uh, is busy, I mean, based, this past weekend, I think, uh, they told us, we had all three trucks dedicated in the county and, uh, three cars in. So, I mean, it's very busy, uh, hospital wait times are awful, it's lots of staff, staff's doing all they can do, or, I mean, they really are, and a lot of people mad, you know, battling, this is a nationwide thing, it ain't just battling. It's happening, if you read any of the magazines from EMS, this is a complaint on east coast to west coast, about wait times, and, you know, it could be two, three hours, even on a stretcher, uh, so, the best hope, you know, for emergency care is with the agencies right now. We're spending two to three hours of patient every time we pick them up. We're treating them right in the, or right in the middle, or right there, or right in front of them, all of them, they ain't got no word, they can't treat them, we're still treating them right inside the hospital. So, we're still running EKGs, giving them oxygen, drugs, breathing treatment, whatever we got to do to maintain them till we can get them into a bed, so, uh, EMS right now is playing the most, most, lot of roles it's ever played, I mean, um, and the numbers, I mean, these numbers are insane, I've never seen numbers as high in Scott County.
There's probably a few numbers that's not on there, too, though. Non, non-contact, we get called out on call, no patient contact, so that's not...
Yeah.
That's not realized in that number.
Well, that one, somebody sign refusal, do you, they call them, decide not to go, is that...
That's, that's, some of those are not, some of those are not in those numbers.
Yeah. Back in the day, when I was, last time I approved, we was thinking that a lot of people, they get filmed there, whatever you go, then you just turn up about, call them, you sign refusal, but I know what happened to us.
That number's large now, because they don't want to go to the hospital. Doctors have told them not to come to the hospital, so they don't want to treat them.
They don't want to go sit in the hospital, and I keep, I don't want to sit in it, but, you know, the staff at the hospitals, I mean, what they can handle, they're doing a good job there, right? I mean, uh, my mom, one of the patients back in December, she has strew, I waited forty-three minutes before we were in the ER door before we ever got her to a CT scanner, but I mean, once we got her into the bed and all that, and the CT done, and they noticed, ultimately, they've done a great job, but, uh, they're overwhelmed, uh, you know, when you got fifty, sixty people in the lobby, then they got another little area, you been in the lobby now, where EMS brings them in, they transfer them to a wheelchair, if they sit up, no, they're going into that, into the little tree out there, and then walks back in the back with the nurses, they got to handle some of those nurses, probably hadn't been in the tent quite a bit at the time, so, uh, it's, like I said, EMS right now is, you know, detrimental to survival right now. I mean, we're out here, we're out in the middle of nowhere in a lot of these parts, and it was already some of these, you know, you go deep fire view, Dunyan, Rodney Valley, or wherever, you was an hour with the patient, from time you got to them anyhow before you could offload, and now, it's three, two, three hours, so...
Another thing, too, which, like we've said, we could spend up to two hours with them in the emergency room. Back in the summer, my daughter had goes, she went to Indian Path thinking that she could get in there quicker. Well, she got there about nine o'clock one night, it was five o'clock the next morning before they took her back, and right before they took her back, there was a guy walked in, he said, "I just come from Holston Valley," he said, "I've been over eight hours over there, waiting to get in, never did," so he thought, "I'll go to Indian Path." My daughter told me, "Well, good luck," said, "I've been waiting eight hours here," so it turned out when he got in. And, and that affects us as a transporting agency, right? When we've got calls backed up, and we're not going to get those calls, they're going to transport those people that they can by POV, virtually, and we lose that call, you know? So, that's, that's hurt us a lot, that and the refusals, uh, not being transported, I mean, if we don't transport, we, we don't get paid, and that's just...
And, you know, right now, the group is more than a reimbursement, take Virginia Medicaid, Virginia Medicaid is about a hundred and ninety-two dollars per transport, if they approve. If you got a diabetic emergency, and we have to give Luke gone now, which is an injectable shot, that shot cost us, out of our, our costs, is three hundred, over three hundred dollars, and you get a hundred and ninety-two dollars for that, so, they don't pay for anything you do in the back of the truck, they pay, pay and pay for transport, and you'll get a few dollars mileage, but, uh, they don't pay for gas, so, but, yeah.
What Medicare has paid for us the last little bit is about twenty-one percent of what we're charging. We charge a hundred, they take one.
Are you having trouble, Roger, now, getting your money back from insurance? Not one dime you lost.
Everybody is right now, and we're all in serious trouble, as far as what our reimbursements are, uh, Medicare and stuff on sequestered funds and things like that, it's just killed us, and now they're denying a lot more than they ever denied, I mean, most of the, they're trying to justify and say that it's not medical necessity, you know, you got a patient with oxygen level of sixty-three percent, and they're saying it's not medically justified to take them to the hospital, you know, sixty-three, I should be putting a ventilator on, so...
Back in the days, the hospitals would, uh, whatever supplies you used, they would stock your drug box, so they don't do that anymore either, I guess?
We have a program with them right now that recently come back, a year and a half ago, uh...
Probably something like that.
They used to do it all the time, like I said, swap that, you went back there and there, what you used, put it back in the box, and then they went away for a long time, we all had to pay for it, but right now, they have, they are doing a box swap, on the cardiac box, whatever we use, we put a ticket in, drop it off, but we have to take Lumps of Pine someplace, because those, because us can't do it at the Valley or Indian Path, so we take it over to Lumps of Pine, and they swap our boxes.
Which is a...
Even that pace, don't go to Lumps of Pine, they'll still do it?
It don't matter, it's all valid.
That's, and, too, it's southwest Virginia, EMS.
Down in Virginia, you can't go across the state line, I must admit.
And also here, next little bit, that's going to be transferred from Lumps of Pine to Norton Hospital, so we'll have, we'll be farther to go to...
We're still...
Are they closing ER, at Lumps of Pine, is that what you're doing?
They're closing the pharmacy.
Pharmacy, the pharmacy.
But our supplies are out the roof, too, without COVID, you know, a box of gloves that used to cost fifteen dollars, like, they've charged us as much as fifty.
I don't know where it's going, I, I don't know, it's, it's kind of, just keep going, it's got to be harder and harder to operate, so...
Yeah, so, you, and EMS now, there's no such thing as volunteer, you can't, they don't want to volunteer to do this, I mean, it's...
Well, they are running a call or two a week's down, and that's who volunteer, you know, a long time ago, I can, Danny, you remember, I mean, the call volume went down, we didn't run four thousand calls, you know, when we first started, we didn't, we didn't do that, and that was volunteer, and they'd come out, and you know, but you can't, we, we provide a twenty-four hour service, we got somebody at every agency, twenty-four hours, day, seven, day, week, and a lot of our calls are running that, we run a lot of calls, and people wait to the last minute, they wait to twelve o'clock right before they go to bed, and they say, "Well, let's, let's call them."
Well, not, not time calls, you know, you know that, you might get one a week or two, maybe, now, I get me a night, every night that we get during the day, every day, they don't slow up.
I'm in Scott County, it's seventy-two volunteers when I was there, everything was under volunteer, then, nothing was paid, but that was seventy-two, just between Gate City and Dunkin'.
Yeah, well, you can't get people to work, you can't pay them to work, now, my goodness.
That's a problem everywhere.
Well, right now, Scott County's got about thirty on the roster, including life members, and I think there's eight that's not life members. So we are a crew of, of life members, basically.
One of the things with us is, our paid people are our, in Doughfield, Nicholsville, the fire department, the rescue squad, they're the ones that does the job, you know, we don't have any...
Said that, though, the board needs to hear some of this, but, I didn't mean to inject all that other stuff, but, go ahead, then.
I'm done, unless you have any other questions as far as me.
Any questions for, for us?
No, I just say, thank you, board, for everything you're all doing, I mean, my goodness, I can't, I can't imagine.
And there is people now, we want you all to understand, there is people that volunteer for the, Roger and I, Dan, I'm saying that we, you know, we, we don't get paid for a week. There is other people in our agencies that do... There is other people in our agencies that do volunteer a lot of times, that don't get paid.
If they did, we wouldn't...
If they did, we, that's right, we wouldn't make it. But our, but our full-time employees get paid twenty-four hours.
A lot of people don't know this, but what it takes to be trained to volunteer. I was cardiac tech, and you was too, Roger, and, and to get that training, to get to spend time in the ER and in intensive care, to get, just to get certified to do this thing, but we were doing some pretty, you know, we had a mobile intensive care unit, we could do anything, and that unit they could do in the, in the emergency room.
Virginia's so far ahead on, believe it or not, on the technology that can be done in the field, it's crazy. You go to the northern states, it ain't even remotely similar to what we do. I mean, we do twelve lead EKGs in the back of the truck.
You go across the county line, so, they can't do what, what we know as EMT.
That's crazy.
I mean, they don't, like, we can get Luke gone injectable, like Roger said, Sullivan County, well, that's, they can't, they can't do that. We have to be able to do that though, 'cause we're thirty minutes away from hospital. You know, if we start out from somebody over one sixty-five, if we're not able to do something, they'll die before we get to the hospital.
That's exactly right.
We'll probably talk about it, I guess, after, after Citizens Express. Where, where does each of you stand right now? Where do you, are you getting ready to lay people off? Where, where, where do you financially stand now?
I don't have enough to make another payroll, I just made payroll.
So, you're looking at laying people off this weekend, or you already have?
No, I've, yeah, down this weekend, late two groups off, we might actually...
You know, we're pretty much in the same vote. Our pay period started the twenty-fourth of January and ran through the sixth, which that'll be this coming Sunday. Our payroll is approximately ten to twelve thousand dollars per payday, and we've got just a little over two thousand dollars in our payable account. Which, now, the thing there, which, we're trying to get bingo started back, but it's been awful slow. Back in Danny used to be with, everything, we could have maybe as many as a hundred people.
Turn people what?
Yep, had a bingo session. When we quit having bingo almost two years ago, we were at fifty to sixty, and so far, about thirty-five is the most we've had since we started back in November. So, we're getting a little bit of money there, but with the restrictions on bingo money, it cannot be used for payroll. So, you know, we've got our hands tied there. And then we've got our money that the county allocated to us for equipment, supplies, insurance. You know, we've got enough to do until budget time again, but, you know, we can't use it either. So, what we're hurting on is payroll right now.
Well, you take the budget from the budget. So, thirty-seven thousand dollars is what Duffield's insurance is for your, on trucks, workers comp, and accidents, and, and bill, thirty-seven thousand, so, don't leave a lot of extras. Start doing the math, putting these on. We don't use any recovery fund for the supplies or gap, we don't make, we never have. It's just, it's not there. I mean, everything in ours from day one has been to cover the payroll, nothing else. If we hadn't rely on the recovery to pay for every single thing, we'd been out for where starting. It's not, we, we got, we done this in oh-seven, Duffield done, and Scott County done it before us, and then Nickelville come a little later. The only reason it was ever done to do the paid employees and try to keep the payroll funded was that, was to provide a service for the people. It's not, we're not making no money, an odd, zero. It's to provide a service to keep people with emergency care in Scott County. That's it. I mean, out here, it's, they're making all kinds of money off insurance. Well, it ain't, I mean, early to get your nine-nine issues is.
Those things aren't employees, man. When we, we can't furnish insurance, our employees get no benefits. We give them a week's vacation in Nickelville, and that's out of our pocket, and we, you know, they get a few sick days, but other than that, they get no benefits.
Zero.
And it's hard to keep good employees when you pay them bare minimum, and they don't get any benefits. I mean, you know, it'd be nice to furnish insurance for employees.
And, you know, someone's talking about, you know, ambulance services and letting them do, famous ambulance, I've been here thirty-seven years doing EMS in Scott County, and I can't write all the names that's been in Scott County, really proud of the services over there. Here in Scott, I mean, here in Scott.
Is that, and they're still here, they still?
They run a day truck out of Duffield, up in Nurseville, yeah.
But the thing about them people, they're...
They can leave at any time.
And they're, they wanna make money. And if they're not making money, they're not be here. That's just, I mean, they're here to make money. We're here to serve the community.
I mean, you tell that when we don't have an ambulance service in the county. One of the few counties that don't. I mean, Lee County's gone, Wisely's gone, Scott County, you got it.
We've done a lot of conversation, you're usually way to Citizens Express, and before y'all were here, that's why I allowed this to progress, because I wanted to, do everything we can get from you to see. And I want the people to know that be, hopefully, they'll watch this and see what we're up, what y'all up against, and what the county's up against.
Are you getting any help from the other counties now when you pick up people from the regional jail? Y'all still have to make them up?
Don't get me started there, now. I'll be like preacher, I'll preach all over here.
So, you know, what, what he's talking about is the regional jail, we have three counties, City of Norton, that uses that, but when they transport, it's, don't matter if Scott County, Wisely, or City of Norton, they're eating the cost. And we tried to get something done about that with Hidewal, trying to get that done.
Scott County's eating the cost.
And we all, we all have to...
Everybody has to go down there, you know, one of them, that's...
But we don't want that.
But, back to the payroll deal, Nickelville's on the same...
We, we, we don't mean I wouldn't make payroll in three months. We had a little money for PPP, we, we had big burdens stowed.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's about you do what you got.
We, we have, we've got four thousand dollars in our payroll account, and we get paid every two weeks, just like these guys do. Our payroll's about eighteen to twenty thousand.
These, these folks are not making money. They're doing it, I mean, they'd go anywhere and make better money than we pay them. I mean, on average, it's twelve dollars and high, thirteen dollars. I mean, I'm paying paramedics, what EMTs make at ambulance.
Probably about two years ago, we were, we was keeping our head above water. We might make an extra two, three thousand this month and lose one the next month.
That's how it goes.
But right now, for every five thousand we're spending, we're only getting a thousand back, so...
You know, I, I know we'll talk about it here in a minute. You know, the average EMT, from what I researched, you know, maybe on the, in the United States, makes about sixteen dollars an hour. You know, to bring a company in here to take over what you all are doing, you know, I've heard some numbers about a certain city, this, this is a small city, about the size of Gate, Gate City, you're not, not very big, was a half a million dollar. The county right now is putting in two-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars to our EMS, that's just our EMS. So, you know, we've got to really, you know, just, just doing what you all do. The, the managers, the overseers, I've seen people like that make sixty thousand dollars. They're not getting paid anything. So, these three are saving the county a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, the way I see it. Just these three. So, you know, we really need to, this next budget year, you know, we really need to look into something. You know, I don't, I don't know, I, I don't know, but I do know that we're gonna have to put more...
Well, we don't wanna come down here with bad news all the time.
Right.
I mean, you know, we, we, we're doing good things for the county.
Yes.
For the people. And we don't wanna, we don't wanna be here as, or, all the time.
Right.
You know, we, we're doing the best we can.
But you're doing, you're doing it for the people of the county.
We're, we're wiring our equipment out, and, you know, then we can't even make payroll.
Yes. Trust that. It was for paying care of people in the community. I wouldn't be standing here.
None of us would be.
I've been into this for forty-five years, this coming August, and I've seen, we started out with nothing, and we've got all three squads that's got the best equipment you'll find anywhere. I mean, I'd put up against any squad here in the state of Virginia. But if we can't get our money from Medicare, Medicaid, insurance companies, we just don't have no choice.
Was it all we can do? I don't know where this will go, but we'll do it.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Not will come out of this expression period, and any other discussion on this, I don't have the answer to it, I don't know. I know it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough place we live now, and getting people to work and even with what we do, families, it's hard, what they family. Any discussion here before we move on?
Well, you know, back in, I think it was November, is that right, Peter? When we allotted some money for their payroll.
November third.
November third. Of course, that, that come from our ARPA money. You know, we, we were able to give them twenty thousand dollars apiece. To, to keep from them laying off people, to keep the service going, I would recommend we do something like that again. Of course, we do have a committee, an ARPA committee, this has not come up before the committee, but the board, I guess, actually has the final say-so over that anyway, but, but we need to do, do, do something. But that's just a Band-Aid. That's gonna, and, you know, if this will continue to go on, as long as COVID, and even after COVID, it might still, I mean, we, we still, still need to look for the future and see what's gonna happen with COVID. What it would cost the county to, to do what they're doing, right now, I don't know what in the world it would do. I mean, it would cost, you know, for the fire and rescue, millions of dollars. That would, so, we need to try to come up with something other than a Band-Aid. But, but right, right now, we need to do something.
What kind of money, Roger, y'all talked about that helped you make the payroll and stuff?
I mean, I think all their payroll run about the same, I mean, we're all paid about the same pay scale, so it's about, you know, right at the end, about dollars every two weeks, around about four thousand.
Ten to twelve.
Ten to twelve each?
Each, yeah.
So, that'd be around, around thirty thousand a month, is that right? Something?
About twenty-two.
Twenty-two, twenty-two.
All right.
All right. Now, that depends on, or again, how much money we get back from Medicare and the insurance companies.
Yeah.
See, that twenty thousand that we got in November, along with what little bits came in, had held us until now.
Was it twenty thousand each?
Yeah.
Is any ARPA money left?
Yes.
Well, could we do anything, I mean, that the y'all, the committee need to sign that, if they're up against it now, could we do anything else now, or is it too soon? I mean, I don't, y'all be doing that, and, and we, uh...
I mean, I, I feel like that's priority. I mean, like, you know, what they were talking about, they're the first people taking care of the sick ones. You know, even over the hospital, you know, he, he said they're, they're treating people in the parking lot, you know, so...
Charlie, what, what we talk about as an organization, as an association, as for the county, as, to set aside some money, not give us that money until we need. If we're getting our insurance reimbursements like we should, we won't need it. But if we don't, we might.
Two thousand dollars short of payroll.
Yeah, I mean, if we're, if we're, if we're five thousand short, two thousand short, or five hundred short, we would like to be able just to say, not, not have to come down here every time something like that happens and have to ask for money.
Have, have money set aside for payroll?
For, for pay, just for payroll, for the rest, for the three squads. And we could, we could give free to our numbers, and that could be done without bothering the board every time that happened.
Well, let me tell you about that. We do need to hear from you, because it's educational, the public needs to know it too. So, as far as y'all coming here, don't ever apologize for that, but we do need to hear this conversation.
We just hate to have to do it every month. You know, like, we don't wanna look bad in the public eye, we don't wanna look like we're not doing our job, because we all doing our job. And when we come down here and have to ask for money every two months to make our payroll, in my eyes, it makes, makes nothing look like it should.
Well, we're in, we're in unique situations too right now. You know, it's all this stuff that's going on, you know, we've had this big rise in COVID, it's probably higher now than it's ever been, I guess.
It is, it is in, in our county.
You know, it's, it's some things, but, I don't know how the, the ones on the ARPA board, how do we need to, do we need to take that before them, or can we just do, this board do that?
It's gonna be the board's decision ultimately anyway.
So, of course, like I said, this is just a Band-Aid. This, this is, it's, it's not a fix. We, we've got to look at doing something else in the future. But I would, you know, we did that in Nov- November, you know, and it's just now February. I would, I would recommend we go ahead and do twenty thousand each again, so be sixty thousand. That, that'd be my recommendation. But we've got to figure out something, because this money's not always gonna be here. You know, the way I see it now, that's, that, that money's gonna be gone next year, you know, so, we've, we've got to figure out something for the future. If we don't, we're, we're gonna be in worse shape of what we are now. We won't have anybody.
It's okay to use this money for that, right? Well, maybe we need to set aside so much money, where they could, when they get in trouble, they could use it. Can we do that, and they pull it out just as they need it?
You can set it up however you want.
I'd say, in my opinion, put a little more than sixty thousand in the, in the fund, if we've got it. I don't know how much is in the fund or nothing like that, but put it in there, and when they need it, they can contact you or however you do it, and pull it out as they need it for their payroll. They may need it this month, next month, they may not, that, that way we use it as long as they've got it, and then we'll just have to do something else. And then, budget time, maybe we get over.
First with the insurance, so we don't know when they transfer, you know, I see it, it comes to my phone, and I'm sure when the tracks is the same way, but we never know. I mean, I may get a transfer on Thursday night before payroll time and carry me over, and I don't need any. But if they don't, you know, if I come up right now, I'm about three thousand dollars short for the next payroll, but I got ten days to get there, so, I may be closer, I may be over, may not need none this time, but Sunday, I have to make a decision based on what I have in my account, or I'm gonna have hospital crews, or I'm running bus crews. So, the safety net right now, if, if they put that in, if you guys put that into an account, it's a safety net that we know, okay, we're a little short this time, but we know we got a safety net, we can keep it running. You know, I may, we may not have drawn very much from it, very often, I don't know, it's value on the insurance. And if Medicare sequester funds again, out of all of that.
That way, we could just request for it. You know, you don't have to, you don't have to give us a long time, you know, to give it. If the money's out, we're short a little bit, we, we can just ask for what we're short, and we can go on, not if laying down, if Roger lays some off, it puts a strain on the, you know, we could do that. We could not run it, but not if they were to handle that. But somebody's got to cover them costs, so that just puts a strain on the rest of them, on the rest of the agencies in the county. If we don't have somebody that are twenty-four, seven at every agency, it just puts a strain on the whole county. And that's not, that's not danger, in my opinion, you know, not only for your employees, but for the county. It's just not, that's just not dangerous.
And when you have to lay people off, you know, they might go out and find out, you won't get them back.
We're losing them. I mean, they gotta work. When people is working, it's gonna work, they're gonna work on them.
Yeah, I don't know the number.
Let's do a hundred and eighty.
A hundred and eighty?
That's sixty...
Three, uh...
Yes, three times.
Hundred and eighty, three times.
And then that way, if we put that hundred and eighty thousand dollars in there, that should hopefully... I mean, I'm thinking from November to February, it's three months, four months, you know.
What's your thoughts, Fred? I mean, you and Sally, all the league out into this with that. I know it's, you gotta be careful on these, how it's placed and how they...
We're allowed to use it for that. We're allowed to use it for that. And then we can reconcile what we don't use, what they don't use at the end of the year. If they don't, if they don't use all that money, then we can reallocate that to something else.
Right. We can budget it to payroll costs for public health.
Yeah.
We just can't put it in like a safety account or nothing like that.
We've just been budgeting it in that amount.
Be just for that. That's, that'd be, I guess, one of the only restrictions that I remember. But still, it's just a Band-Aid.
It is.
We, I know it sounds like a lot of money, but that's just, still just a Band-Aid. We've got to, we've got to fix it.
That'll get us through the budget here. That'll get us through...
And we're working on some other stuff ourselves, so, on the million dollars, so...
Yeah.
We've got, and the meeting tomorrow, one o'clock. Do we need to do this today or give it away till then till we kick it around some more? Y'all okay doing it today?
Tomorrow, you'll be approving the ARPA budget. So if you decide on an amount today, you'll have all of that ready tomorrow, or it can be discussed tomorrow, either way.
I think we should. They give us some time to think about it and, so, I mean, I'm good with it, today or tomorrow, but it'll give one more time for you to look at it with all the numbers and everything that are ready for us, but tomorrow.
I agree. She's ready to go.
Ready to go, okay. I knew you were, but give everybody a little bit and think about between now and one o'clock tomorrow. Everybody's all right with that?
I won't be able to be at the meeting tomorrow, but I am all for contributing to our fire rescue.
Come budget time, this is, you know, in June, you know, when we have to have our budget together, what do you, what, we're doing the same thing, help?
What we had talked about, we've not really discussed the number as a group, but what we had talked about before, and you and I talked about, was a hundred and fifty or sixty thousand a year.
Putting in a fund.
Putting in a fund that we could have access, that we could use when we got in trouble.
That's, we were on the Budget Committee and all of us together, you know, we need to think about that. We need to think about what to do in June. We need, we need something.
And we're not asking you to hand it to us and here's your hundred and sixty thousand for it off. We're not asking.
Just use that.
Money to be available.
A safety net.
A safety net.
Right.
And they have their budget worksheet, so that'll have to be turned in by March the fourth. So Roger's president of the Rescue Squad Association, so he already has that.
Danny, if you're okay, which Scott County, if our payroll's gonna end, that's kind of something. We don't know what we can get in for the next two days, but we could use the twenty thousand right now and just see what we can get in.
So if we do tomorrow, Thursday, that would be...
That would be, yeah. The check won't be written until next week.
Okay.
But also, for any board member, we can give you a detailed report of our payroll accounts. We have nothing to hide, so if you want to look at it, which Fred might, that's, you know, a little bit of time or whatever, we can give you anything that you want to look at.
If there's any questions, if there's ever any questions, I would love to look.
Right. Charles Rickle does ours down here. We have them just for our money spend, you know, what he's spending.
But tomorrow, we will look at all this and we'll have a, you know, time to think about it, pray about it, and we can do something. And one thing I want y'all to leave here is you leave it up to think about. We got your back. I mean, ultimately, we do. And we're gonna do whatever it takes to keep our EMS part of...
Fire department.
Yeah, part of, part of us up and going.
And we appreciate what y'all have done for us, fire and rescue in Scott County. We would not be here without you, and you all know that. But we have a lot of people that followed here, that's not paid, that makes this thing go in Scott County and emergency services.
All right. If y'all okay, that's what we'll do. Then we'll tomorrow, one o'clock, and we'll kick it around some more, maybe a little bit, maybe a lot, but we'll, we will do something and you'll meet your payroll. We'll make sure that happens.
Thank you.
We gotta keep these trucks rolling, so whatever it takes.
Appreciate it.
Spend a lot of time on that. Any other discussion before we move on to item seven? All right, item seven, Emergency Operation Plan. If you had a chance to look at that, this is an every four-year requirement. Fred, do you want to discuss it briefly?
We have three documents within the plan that we have to have approval for, and that's approval and implementation, which will be signed, and the promulgation, and a NIMs resolution that'll be signed by the chairman. And as county administrator, I'll sign the promulgation. So we just need authority to sign those. We have to update this plan every four years, and it is that time again. And Danny and Stephanie, as chairman and vice chairman, serve in the emergency chain of custody. You know, if we have to open up the emergency operations center, that's Danny's call ultimately, and Stephanie behind him as vice chair.
All right. Any other discussion before we go?
So it's three different motions, right?
Three different?
Three different approvals.
Or can we walk them?
I think last time we did them.
Second?
Yeah.
Well, the first one being walk, will you say?
Thank you, God.
Appreciate it.
The first one is the approval and implementation resolution.
Do we have a motion to approve the first one, the implementation resolution? Do we have a motion?
So will Mr. Chairman.
Did you made a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ricky, second. Any discussion? On fair vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Carry.
The second one's the promulgation.
Okay. So, Mr. Ricky made a motion. On it, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. This is second. Any discussion? On fair vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. And the third one?
A NIMs resolution. But to be signed by the board chair.
Do we have a motion on the NIMs resolution?
No, no.
Did you made a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Harris, second. Any discussion? On fair vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. All right. Next item is item eight, the Boys and Girls Club. When they came, we, uh, we take it up in the budget, made the five thousand dollars. And so why I say they need it now, is that correct, Ms. Arden?
They were requesting to have that funding this year.
So they didn't want to wait until the budget year, which would be, get the money July first. So any discussion, Ms. Arden, you want to tell us if you want?
Your option would be if you want to go ahead and fund them five thousand dollars for this fiscal year to take from your contingency, and you do have the available funds to do that.
Did we not give them none in the budget last year, Fred?
Not for this current fiscal year, no.
How's that leave us on our contingency? Would you?
How you have about forty-two thousand?
So we could show you.
Yeah. You did earmark twenty plus, twenty to thirty thousand for the ARPA grant for the fire departments. But since then, we've learned that we can use the ARPA funds for that match, if that's what you choose to do. So that would open up even more contingency money for you.
Good deal. And this is, this is needed, and I think what they do is, is service worth to the county and residents. So we'll put this to a motion to approve this five thousand, come out of our contingency fund.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Or Mr. Ricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Did the second, any discussion? On fair vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is item nine, the Troy Banks Agreement. Ms. Arden, if you would, we have, while you wrote down in your description, but if you would for the rest of the...
This is a renewal agreement with Troy and Banks, who are utility and telecommunication consultants. They'll take a look at our utility deals, and if there's any kind of savings, they will implement those for us. It's no cost upfront. They do get twenty-four percent of the yearly savings if they do find savings for us. But if they do not, then there's no cost to the county. And they have done this service for us periodically in the past. So this is just a renewal agreement.
Have they done?
All right. Do we have a motion? This renewal agreement with Troy and Banks?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. This has made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
This group is second. Any discussion? On fair vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is item ten, for our housing resolution. Ms. Arden, do you again?
This is a yearly requirement that we have with DHCD to meet our fire housing. There's a resolution that's on your tablet to adopt.
Yeah, it's up there.
And it just names me as the designated fire housing administrator, in case there's any fire housing complaints. It's a resolution to direct those to me.
All right.
And it will be advertised in the paper as such.
All right. These motions for our housing resolution, do we have a motion?
All right.
This authorizes you to sign, correct, what we?
Yes.
Okay.
You made a motion, Mr. Harris. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Did the second, any discussion? On fair vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is to ratify the building permit refund at a hundred and fifty-five dollars, twenty-nine cents. Go with the start.
All right.
Yeah, I requested during the month to do a refund for a building permit of a hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. And we wanted to go ahead and get that taken care of. So that's why I've reached out to you beforehand. So we just need to ratify that that was at your authority.
Y'all would silence your cell phones in here, if you would, please?
Okay.
If you would, silence your cellphone. If you would take the conversation outside when we're meeting, it's kind of disruptive.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. But I don't mind if we just go out there because we're, it's hard to hear when we do that.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, sir. Okay, on this, is the reimbursement one fifty-five, twenty-nine. Do we have a motion on this refund?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Ricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
This group is second. Any discussion? On fair vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next item is item twelve, redistricting committee. Ms. Arden?
We need to select one representative, citizen representative from each of your districts to serve on a redistricting committee. This is something that takes place after each census and the data comes back to us. And it's just to make sure all the districts are within a five percent range. So we have to do some adjustments. So I need one from each district.
Do you want to get it to publicly or just give it to you? Do it be approved or?
Publicly.
All righty. I have mine ready, but everybody have some, honey?
Call me forward.
I got hers.
Okay.
Okay, District Two?
I forgot.
Three?
I forgot. Mr. Vickers, would you?
Larry Vickers? They'll be made twice in the redistricting, be twice, I think, in February, but it will be about it. As we call it a census redrawn, the district line, so you can handle that. So you got somebody.
That's how I get them. I put them on the spot.
Mr. Ford?
Dana McClain, I, District End of the County.
Bye.
Sandra Collins. Did you go for Sandy?
Y'all have to give me these people's contact information.
I will.
And Miss Hood?
No, you can go ahead.
Do we need to vote on these entirely? Okay. So these have been nominated. Do we have a motion that these folks be on the redistricting committee? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Did you make a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Ricky, second. Any discussion? On fair vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Did you ever bail you out here? I must be a little... Look, he's in.
For appropriations, please appropriate three hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents to Sheriff Travel Conferences, three one two zero zero dash five five four zero for a reimbursement received at the positive treasurer's office. And appropriate nineteen thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-five cents to collections, repair, maintenance, four two three zero zero dash six zero zero nine for an insurance claim received and deposited at the treasurer's office. And that's all the appropriations.
Do we have a motion on the appropriations?
No, no.
Did you made a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
This group is second. Any discussion? On fair vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
You have one transfer. Please transfer seven hundred and fifty dollars from victim witness grant training conferences, two two one five seven dash five five four zero to office supplies, two two one five seven dash six zero zero one.
Any motion on transfers?
No, no.
Mr. Ricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
This is the second. On fair vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
On grants, please accept DEQ-FY twenty-two competitive litter prevention and recycling grant. If accepted, please appropriate five hundred dollars to the established budget code litter control DEQ grant supplies, three five two zero zero dash six zero zero three for monies received and deposited at the treasurer's office. And please accept sheriff's office DCJS burn jag law enforcement block grant, FFY eighteen. If accepted, please establish expense code for police supplies, four dash one dash three one three five six dash six zero one zero. And please accept sheriff's office DCJS burn jag local law enforcement block grant, FFY nineteen. If accepted, please establish expense code for police supplies, four dash one dash three one three five seven dash six zero one zero. And that's all the grants.
Do we have a motion on the grants?
No, no, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris made a motion and you seconded it. Marshall? On fair vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is deployments. Ms. Dana?
You have one appointment to the Crooked Road Board. John Kilgore has been serving. He reapplied and you have no other applicants.
Any nomination with the Crooked Road Board?
I'll nominate Mr. John Kilgore.
Any other nominations?
Motion nomination cease and book life application.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Did you second? On fair vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. All right.
You have one appointment to the Housing Authority. Joe Horton has been serving. He reapplied. You have no other applicants.
And do we have any nomination with the Housing Authority?
I'll nominate John Kilgore.
Any other nominations?
Motion nomination cease and book life application.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Harris, second. Any discussion? On fair vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
You have one appointment to the Building Code Appeal Board. Michael Kenkay has been serving. He reapplied. You have no other applicants.
Any nominations for the Building Code Appeal Board? That was Michael Joe Kenkay. And he's been, he's been served. So do we have, do we have a nomination?
I'll nominate Mr. Kilgore.
Uh, you know, Kenkay?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it. All right. Any other nominations?
Who did the?
Any other nomination for the Building Code Appeal Board?
I'll make the motion. We...
Nomination cease?
Nomination cease, and we vote by acclamation. Thank you.
You got it. Any, do we have a second, sorry?
I'll second.
Mr. Harris, second. On fair vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. One more?
You have one appointment to the Planning Commission. Rodney Baker has been serving. He reapplied, and you have no other applicants.
Any nomination for the Planning Commission?
I'll nominate Mr. Baker.
Any other nominations?
I'll make a motion. Nomination cease and book life application.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
This group is second. On fair vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. And he has served on that for a point years, I talked to him the other day, he's gone a long time, he chairs that, that planning commission too, so Rodney has served well. Alright, County Attorney Allen, Ms. Kegley.
I don't have anything for you this morning, I've been answering any questions.
If you have comments or questions for Ms. Kegley. Longly keep her quiet, I mean, for doing good, so be happy to give us out of trouble somewhere, out of jail.
Nothing to say about this morning.
Thank you for what you do, appreciate you. Alright, County Administrator Allen, Ms. Lawrence.
Your general fund balance after February claims is seven million five hundred twelve thousand eight hundred twenty dollars and fifty-nine cents. Early claims for the month total two hundred forty-seven thousand, I'm sorry, two hundred ninety thousand seven hundred five dollars and eighty-nine cents. And one of those large ones was for the town of Gate City, a hundred twelve thousand four hundred seventy dollars and eighty-four cents. That's an ARPA grant for utility arrears, so that's just a pass through. And current claims total eight hundred twenty thousand three hundred fifteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. And the quarterly regional jail payment, of course, is the big one, six hundred twenty-nine thousand five hundred twenty dollars and eighty-seven cents. So total claims that need approved is one million one hundred eleven thousand twenty-one dollars and twenty-six cents.
Where are we at on our numbers with the regional jails?
We're budgeted at one ninety-five. And we're at one seventy currently. And there is a bill in the House to up the contribution to twelve dollars per state responsible inmate. Which would almost bring it back to what it originally started as before.
It's currently four eight?
Yeah, four or eight.
I think it's four.
It's pretty low right now, so we'll watch that budget bill and see how it moves through. But that's one that's currently in, that would affect our budget for next year. Of course, it would decrease what we have to pay if the state picks up more.
We have some problems being, they're not this bad.
It's just a smaller reimbursement, yeah, they pay, but it's just, it's not as much as originally.
The original was sixteen, back in the day.
What was the reason? What does the bill, do you know? Do you know what was behind it?
I'm not sure.
Not sure.
I'm sure it's something that VACO has been advocating for on behalf of the counties, because it's not only us, you know, it's statewide, where the reimbursement is, has been low. Of course, the state does pay the salaries in France, which is huge, huge amounts toward the regional jail, because those are regional jail employees that the state pays for. So they do contribute a lot, but you know, this would help also.
One thing, because I've talked about this a lot, it hurts, is if the regional, regional jail happened two thousand and five, it was keeping inmate one year, and then if he got more than two, they got sent up to the state penitentiary, well, they increased that to two years. And there's, we had several, at one time, the past two years, it wouldn't take them, because of COVID, they said. So we're having a lot of that, it's been, it's been expensive, but anyway. Bruce will come into the regional jail system, it's going to help a lot too, he'll help some, as far as like bring the cost per inmate down a little bit, so. Anyway, spread the misery.
Do you know how many state inmates we have right now, Fred?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. That's down.
That is down.
Yeah, we've got close to fifty during the beginning of COVID, when they weren't moving anybody at all.
Do we know any numbers about Scott River and how many is enrolled in that?
I don't.
One thing I know, Chairman, at Maricopa, we're down to seven million five hundred thousand, and last year it's nine million one hundred eighty-one thousand, so we're down. So compared to last year, but this profit, our funds is causing that.
The school system took a draw on the thirty-first of three point two million.
Okay.
So that, that was a, that's a pretty good difference.
Yeah.
And last year, it was later in the year before they took that.
Good enough, so we're okay. Do we know if the treasurer, she gonna send out the link notices this year, do we know?
She is. March, I believe, and they're due April fifteenth.
Watch it didn't happen, I think it was a big hit on our revenue, but anyway.
I did check last week and she gave me the dates, I told you incorrectly, but she does have those to do.
I know she put it ahead in Scott County papers, she's got, do you know any of these stops?
You know, I seen that too, and usually she don't do that, but I was surprised that she had that in there to let people know that maybe, we say so much about it here that she is doing it, so.
She has to do it every year, has to be in the paper every year.
Okay. Thing about it, now the DFP says you get your tags three, three years or something, so you get your tags now, you're not paying your personal property taxes for a couple of years, and they can't do anything about it, you still got your tags, so.
Don't have to pop that.
I'll take it off.
Drop that because of taxes.
But you know, people know, I mean, it's, it's just a bird under my saddle for a long time, DFP stops and personal property taxes not being collected. Alright, anything else, where are we, do we vote on this? Any discussion or entertain a motion to approve or pay the bills?
I'll make a motion to pay the bill.
Mr. Trump made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Trump is second, any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
No, I don't have a.
Okay, alright. Next item is a presentation, y'all will take a break, count who you be.
You will shortly, yeah.
Alright. Okay, come on.
It's good to see everybody, thanks for having me. I'll start talking about keeping Memorial Park, but really I'll just talk about Larry since he's here, I appreciate everything he's done. He's been great to work with. I feel like we built a good relationship, kind of a buffer for the county and for Keith Park. It does look fantastic, I know every time I come down here and talk about how good it looks, it's, it looks great, they keep that place in phenomenal shape. So thank you for your service, even though Jerry recruited you back into something, but. Deadfield Park's one, it probably needs some love now, I've got some plans for some minor things there, hope to work with Scott Service. Just some minor improvements to that park, it's a much smaller park, it's a whole different animal than Keith Park, but it's, it's probably on the, you know, we, we give a lot of attention to Keith, I think, I want to try to do some things in Deadfield, minor things, but work with Scott Service for that. I want to thank Priti Sarns, she secured a grant, it's mostly, you know, for some bear proof containers throughout the county. We got one at Scott Kane Park, we got one at Keith Memorial Park, those were very much needed. We have one shelter in particular that's kind of away from view and it does tend to have animals get into it, it's red trash everywhere, so. Thank you, Ms. Sarns, for getting that for not just us, but the whole county. On the rec side of things, we are doing registration currently for our basketball league, that's usually in March and April. It's been a while since we've done basketball or volleyball, so we did do our golf and tennis last year in the summer, it's outdoors, we were able to get it done fine. I know right now, things are kind of bad in the schools. I have pushed back my start date to try to combat that, so I'm hoping, you know, first mid-March, when I starting, that that situation's better, so. I know I'm ready to get back into doing that, I know the public is, the feedback I've got, the forms I've already got, so. Slowly starting to get back to normal on some of those activities, and that's all I've got on the rec side. Down here for the park, you'll see it says currently it's six percent decrease compared to last year. You know, last year was our best financial year, you know, fiscal revenue year in about a decade. So just being six percent off that right now, I'll try to describe a few things that may account for that. Obviously, you always want to be going forward, more and more and more, but I, I think we're in a really good place with that six percent number being just that low off of our historic year last year, I think that shows we're in a good spot. The only bad news I have, I know I talked about some greens damaged, some vandalism, that came back again in December. Strangely enough, somebody took two sections of number one green, the same exact thing, same dimensions, same, same, same thing. So, I did, I want to thank Barry Green with Pro Green down in Morgantown, North Carolina. This time I had to go down there, it's a beautiful place, but it's a couple hours away, but he took care of us, so we got that repaired. We have added some surveillance and security measures, of course, we've contacted local authorities that are involved. Police presence is, Gate City and Scott County's increased, but that's just a, you know, we've been very fortunate there, since I've been there, just very, very little, what I would call trespass and vandalism, that kind of has increased here in the last year, year to two years. Nothing catastrophic yet, but we are hyper aware of what's going on there, so that's kind of something to keep our, keep our pulse on for sure, to see what's happening there. So I talked about that six percent decrease, this may account for probably a good chunk of it. As you know, the rental rent was there, reassessment hearings were held up there, that blocked out about six weeks, and that's the time when people are usually renting, you know, November, December, that's our busy time for rentals, so. I think that probably is where that six percent, you could about account for that right there, and the room being unavailable for those weeks. And of course, coming up, the board of equalization is going to be up there for about two months, I think, February to March, I believe. So, you know, that knocks out a little bit of revenue, nothing big, but that's why I think that six, I mean, you could about account that six percent decrease as room rentals, but that, that would pretty much cover it, so. And really going forward, we are working right now, we pretty much got set our spring tournament schedule and our summer tournament schedule. We work with, I think we've got a Rycoe Golf that's hosting a tournament, Twin Springs Football, of course, the big blue boosters, which is Gate City. You know, we always work with them, that's a big thing for us to work with them and help them, because that's big fundraisers for them, so. Really, I said I keep it short, so we all keep our promise, that's all I've got, unless y'all have any questions, so. Thank you, I appreciate it.
I want to ask you one thing.
Yes, sir.
I was hit, I say hit, suggested a few years ago about doing something up there. The view there from that golf course, from that, from where that clubhouse is, it's unbelievable, about to build something there eventually, it takes some capital to do that. To work, like you have, the equalization stuff going on there, it's tidy, that you can't rent it out. But somewhere down the road, we could look, I think, at building something up there that can be used even more for small conferences, that kind of stuff. I think we have the room for it, we could do it, build something there to do that. And, and I've looked at it, I've looked at thought, you know, kind of visualized what we need to have something there. Pretty good sized building, probably could host some things there that might generate enough revenue in the paper itself over time.
I know, and this is something years and years ago, we, somebody talked about, like you were saying, something bigger meeting space, more space, you know, even, you know, high school proms, large things like that, you know, that's something that had been brought up years and years ago, but as you said, that'd be a big capital investment. You know, we probably could look at as far as room and space, I think that's a possibility. So I can, I, if there's some resource that I can look at and kind of start gathering some just initial basic information on something like that. What it would look like, what it would cost, what, how much space we need, that kind of thing, so.
The more I can think about that a little bit, about what we could do there, and when you look at it, I mean, it's not a better view of discounting, I mean, what you're seeing two months to get, and the whole, you see everything.
That's something we, we have brought up, get possibly some type of marker or plaque or something towards the view of Moxton Gap, because you know, so many people come up there and throw that picture, something that maybe tells the history of it and what you're looking at, maybe even how many mountain ranges, you know, you can see, there's mountain ranges in North Carolina, you can see from that, that gap up there, a lot of people talk about that, so. That's another thing, get some type of, you know, information there for people that want to see that and know that, so. It is, I take it for granted out there every day, but you can see people come up and say, oh my lord, you know, what a view, what a view, and I'm like, yeah, I see it every day, they're, they're blown away by it, so.
Well, there's even a bigger push for tourism, and so that could be something to think about. A lot of those people, they like the view, they kind of be a dollar view, whatever you want to call it, but I think we have an asset there that could be, that could be utilized and have something there that people want to come and see and have, and to have things there.
Yeah, like I said, initially, the first, the first thing people thought was problems, and then you start thinking larger, larger advanced conferences.
That's why many conferences do like Metta View or something like that, but, but we could have something, you know, similar that would, that we could.
You know, recently, somebody did have a, they were, they ran the room, they actually had what I would call like a mini, because it is a small room, they always have like a mini like market store thing, like different vendors came up there and had about four or five different little sections set up, and people came to shop, and they did those vendors, you know, so, you know, there, there's probably, there's definitely something there too to have, to look at.
Be kicking around, you guys, everybody here too, to think about something, some ideas, but when you look at it, I mean, it's just the treasure to have that, and the golf course is, is a big deal, but to have something there for people, and a lot of people kind of like, like going to conferences at Metta View, and it's on a golf course, they play golf. And then they have their conference, and of course, they have a hotel there too, which of course, we don't have, but anyway, it would be something to think about.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start gathering some just.
If you would.
Information, yeah. Lady, offer a note.
Alright, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Alrighty.
Danny?
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman Dan. I looked at those dates and she told me the first part of March is when those delinquents will be sent out. And they are due by April fifteenth, and in this week's paper, she has placed an ad that says they will be sent to tax if they are not paid, or if they're not paid, they'll be sent to tax on May second.
Yeah, good. Good. The tax is the collection, people use our Richmond, John Rice company today.
TACS.
TACS, yeah.
TACS.
It's not T A X, TACS. Anyway, I'm glad, I'm glad that's happening, it's good to do. Alrighty, Mr. Kilgore won't be here, everybody knows his father passed away, he's got a lot going on in his family, so very understandable. We're down to item eighteen, comments, action from the board, Mr. Trump, do you have anything?
Yes, I'd like to thank for all the trash that's been picked up along the roads, they've done a wonderful job at that. And there was some Scott workers down at Yuma, and they picked up all the trash, we can blow it off the trucks and stuff, and it really looks good. Really thank everybody, whoever picked all the trash up, it's been all along the roads everywhere. And one more thing, Fred, do you have the number to call for the appointments at the equalization board, telephone numbers?
I could look those up, do you want to run them?
Well, I thought you could announce them over the, here, people have been calling me asking me what the number is.
This should be on their tax record.
On that letter they got too.
On the letter they got.
It's on your tax assessment notice, there's two phone numbers. And those phone lines will be available February fourteenth.
Yeah, I've told them that, I just didn't know what number it was, I'll tell them to look on our tax tickets then.
It's on there, there's two different phone numbers.
It'll be advertised just.
Okay.
After tomorrow's meeting, next paper, it'll have those in there as well.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Trump?
Just, I guess, speaking about the equalization, the reassessment, just very briefly. COVID hit us, you know, at a bad time, and so the reassessments, you know, hit at a bad time, you know, too, you know, with COVID and all. But you know, that's a process, you know, that happens every six years, and we've mentioned before, and we've, we've discussed about it. I'm an advocate for a local tax reassessment office, whereas, and I hope that through this year that we can get energized, we can do some work on that and get to that point. I think there's some upfront costs there that we've discussed and we've talked about before, but I think that's something we really should look at, so we don't get hit, you know, once every six years, and when you get hit that way, it's, it's like a big ouch. And I guess, and Danny, you've made the mention of this, and the last time, the reassessment just, it didn't really net enough to pay for the folks that came down and did the reassessment. And one thing that I've heard from a lot of people is about getting folks, you know, from out of the county to do it, well, we had nobody. Uh, and one thing that I've heard from a lot of people, um, is about getting folks, you know, from out of the county to do it, well, we had nobody from within the county that did a bit on it, so. We have to choose some, you know, that's available for us, you know, to be able to do that. So, uh, the Equalization Board, you know, is a process, and so, uh, the folks have their letters and instructions as, as to what, you know, they need to do, so. I just would say be civil about it, and the whole purpose of the reassessment is to get our properties and, and our, uh, and so forth at current market value, that's the whole purpose of the reassessment. And, and that's what it's been about for decades, and so that's where we're at again. I think, uh, it hurts a lot this time because of the Covid, I think that hurts a lot of people, and the inflation, you know, uh, also. The other thing I would like to mention is, uh. And I spoke to John about it earlier, and he said it was okay, and I think we, uh, need to give recognition to John Kildore Senior that passed away, and, um, he was, been a great, uh, civil, uh, community leader in our county.
He's a veteran too.
And he's a veteran, that's right, and so, uh. And I've read some of the tributes, you know, that the family members had for tribute, you know, for him, which was really great, uh, on Facebook. Always had a smile, he loved it, he loved, I loved, I loved his coffee because in the Army retiree, I, I drank coffee a lot, and when you got a cup of coffee from John, it was a cup of coffee, all right? It was strong, but, um, really appreciate him and his family, um, and, uh. Just wanted to say a special shout-out, you know, for, uh, for John Kildore Senior. Really, you know, a, a great leader in our community, that's all I.
Mr. Hare.
Appreciate what everybody's doing, I'm, hell, I'm sort of scatterbrained this time of year, so it, appreciate Mr. Vickers, what he's done with Nicholsville Park. And look forward to what Jeff's going to do, Jeff will be a great replacement, I believe, not, not a replacement, you can't replace people, but, uh, a good, good guy to be in that role, but. One thing that, that was brought up, I meant to say something last month, but, uh, of course, we did a lot of talk about the fire departments and the E M S and things like that, but, uh, the Nicholsville Fire Department has added on to their, uh. Where they put their fire trucks and stuff like that, and they were asking for a, uh, relief for the building permit, uh, I don't know if that's something we can do now, or we need to wait until next meeting, but.
When it's a debate.
Uh, I mean, it's, whenever we need to do it, they're fine with it, uh, however we need to do that. Uh, and then, one more thing, last year, this, about this time, we talked about the six-year plan, you know, we all got a row together, and we said something, you know, uh, like four of them made it, and then the rest of them, we said that we would add them this year. Uh, is that something we're still going to do?
I'm certain.
Maybe, uh, if we can get that, get those other, however many it was, three or four, put on the list, if that's how we're going to do that.
Jackie should have that on reading, because we gave him all of them in the order they were written.
Okay.
So, he'll probably just plug those in when he brings that to the board.
Okay, all right, if, we'll, we'll question you about that then when the time comes. Uh, but anyway, appreciate what everybody's doing.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. Ricky.
Don't have a whole lot, I just want to say I appreciate the people from the Life saving crews up here this morning. I probably sit here because of, from last year, but that's all I have, thanks, sir.
Ms. Hood, you have anything?
I don't have anything today.
Okay, Ms. Groby.
Uh, thank you, everybody, thank all the staff, and each one of you board members as well, too, so, um. You know, we have, I have had a few calls about the Board of Equalization, um, so that, you know, just pay attention to those tax records, um, um, for the phone numbers and things, I, I didn't know exactly what those were, but they are on the tax tickets.
I have them.
Okay.
I looked them up.
Anything else?
Uh, no, good, thank you.
Those phone numbers are four five two zero zero five three. And four five two zero zero five four. February fourteenth. They will not be available before then.
So, that's the number for them to call?
Yep.
And I do want to say that, you know, with, kind of going along with what Marshall said about the reassessments and things. Some, I've had some folks call and ask if we can, as a board, throw out what they have assessed, and, I mean, I, I just want to, I just want to say that, you know. I personally am not a tax assessor, I, a land assessor, I don't know anything about that, that's why we have, that's why we've hired the firm that we did. Uh, we have to trust in, in, in their, in their ability to do their job, so that's why we've hired them, you know, it's, it's not up to this board to decide what your tax assessment should be. You know, I mean, I, I got a tax assessment just exactly, just exactly like everyone else did, you know, I, it is what it is, and, and I understand the frustration with that, I do. But, uh, you know, just understand that, you know, I, we don't, we don't make that, uh, judgment on what your personal, what your, what your property tax, what your property taxes are, you know, I, I personally don't do that, so. I, I just want to make that, that, that kind of clear.
Can I make, can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
Why do you all hire outsiders to do your own taxes, or assessments?
We.
Why don't, why don't you all take that money and put it in your budget, instead of paying the other people?
And use it for, we have to have the tax assessment done, that's a Virginia code, we have to have.
Virginia law, right?
Yes.
Every six years.
Every six years, we have to.
We thought they'd use some common sense and do your own assessment.
Well, do you? Okay, so the assessment, I can answer that, the assessment, I'm not qualified to do that.
I know, but we've got people in Scott County can do it.
We are looking at having a assessor's office eventually.
I understand, I understand why y'all pay millions of dollars that somebody to assess.
No, it's not that, but it's three hundred, about three hundred, three hundred, two hundred seventy-five thousand.
I hear it's more than that.
It's two seventy-five, but listen, we have to bid that out, and people bid on it, and then you have to go with the lowest bid, and then we have nobody, you have to go with what you've got.
Yes.
As far as this company, the one disappointment I had in them is they said we wouldn't get very many for the equalization, where they would take care of it, and people I've talked to.
The fact I'm complaining about is, if you own property.
Yeah.
Okay, over the years of time, the, the tax assessment eats it up, it's, it's got no value to it, people in Scott County today, it, it's a penalty if you own anything. I mean, if you got land and you have to pay taxes on it, over time, that taxes eats the property up, it, it's a penalty to own anything in Scott County.
It's like that in every county, our tax rate's eighty cents, there's some counties.
I know that, I know, you've got to have money.
Let me talk, let me speak, okay, it's eighty cents, in some counties it's four dollars, okay, so, we have a little tax rate, believe it or not, we do, uh. And what you got to think about is, we're doing what's required by law, we have to, you can't, you put an R F P out, which is a bid, and you get this back, it's what you got to go with, you take the lowest bid, or the ones you felt like could do the job. Now, the numbers, when they do the assessment, they use the numbers that we give them, they will look, they throw out the high property sales score, they throw out the extreme high, extreme low, then they go with that, and that's how they do the assessment. So, what if your neighbor sold something, then they will use those numbers to, to set the tact, the, the assessed value, they met with us two at a time in July. And so, they showed us probably thirty properties, and they told us this is going to happen, for example, one house I remember, it prays for one oh seven, like one eighty-seven, and so, that's what you have to go by, they use the numbers that's given to them by the county. So, anybody coming down that, it would probably be in the same as for is millions of dollars, that is not correct.
Okay.
It's not, so it's three hundred, two hundred seventy-five thousand, that's what it was, and we paid them to do that.
That was for us to have those assessments done, it wasn't a million dollars.
No, another thing too, what you really got was a twelve-year assessment, because in two thousand fifteen, we did not get a good assessment. Because it's, like, you know, we said we didn't get enough to pay for the assessment hardly, and so, this time, it's really like a twelve-year assessment, it's what, it's what everybody got, because we didn't get, it, it was like, well, not getting all of that, but still, this, this assessment, I believe, is, is probably more fair. There's people coming here too, which is not fair to our county people, they're coming here and buying property, uh, from other places, they're getting away from it. One guy called me, he's the, he's the top cop over at Capitol Police that's locating here, they're getting away from these higher tax areas coming here, uh, one guy's a surgeon, calling me from, from, uh, Charlotte. He's locating here, he got a job at Valid Health, and he's, he's telling Scott County, and I don't know what they're paying, but it's a lot, is it fair to people in there, probably not. So, anyway, this assessment, it's going to be, it, it is hard, but we got to do what's required by law, we, we cannot skirt around it. But people, listen, you're here, people need to come and, and voice their concern, they need to know, but they're paying the bills, you need to know.
One thing you mentioned earlier was people coming in from out of the county that don't know the county, and I've had several calls about this, and Marshall, I think, uh, Mr. Tipton has proposed this in the past. People come in here from Salem or up, you know, toward the Roanoke Valley area, and they come in, they don't know the land, they don't know what floods and what doesn't flood, and, you know, that, that type of thing. What we've talked about before is doing what you said, maybe looking at somebody in Scott County that can do that, you're right.
That's what I'm, that's my concern.
Yeah, we're all agree with that.
We've talked about that in toward budget, and, and on a little forward after we get through this, this time, this equalization time, we will look at that, but. Two hundred seventy-five thousand, I've heard Danny and some other people say that it'll cost much, much more to have somebody in the county doing that.
Well, you've got to think about it as two seventy-five, that's for the six years.
Six years, yeah.
So, I mean, then we're going to end, because, I mean, if you're, if we're hiring a, a permanent tax assessor, land tax assessor, we're going to keep them on staff in the county, that's a yearly salary plus benefits.
I thought I'd have an employee as a clerical person.
We'll have to have.
And a vehicle.
I mean, it's not going to be that, I mean, there's a cost associated with everything, right, so.
Yeah, but you're giving them money in the county.
And that's not, and fair, I, I agree with that.
You're giving them money in the county.
I agree that, I agree with that, but I mean.
It'd probably cost twice that to, to have an office here, work, work with the Commissioner Redd, it'd probably cost twice what we're paying, but short-term, it's going to cost, long-term, it will help the people.
Yeah, I agree.
It'll help them.
It would be better, I personally would prefer an office here.
Yeah.
Somebody here, personally, I would.
You know, you were talking about the increase in cost, what, what that would cost to have an employee, I looked at one of the, our neighboring counties that has one, and it's, uh, on their budget, it's around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, just to have that. Uh, it's, uh, so we're looking at a hundred and fifty times six.
And that's what you're.
Or, you know, a hundred times six would be six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we're, so we, we have to, we have to really be careful, and I, I understand, you know, I, mind the, the, you know, my, my taxes, the farmers in this county, on the agricultural side of it especially. Uh, we're really, of course, I'm, I think we need to wait till after the Equalization Board meets, and let's get the final numbers before we start really talking about it, because, you know, I, we don't really have a, a good number yet. Uh, I'm, I'm hoping maybe, uh, they can get some of these things settled, but like Danny said, you know, for the last twelve years, we've not had a good assessment, but that's still not the people's fault. You know, it's not, it's not the people of this county's fault that, uh, uh, we had a bad assessment, it's not really anybody's fault, I don't guess, but, uh, it's just something we've got to, we've got to catch up, we're, we're falling behind. But, uh, back, back to the, back to how much we're going to pay, it's, it's going to put people out of business. Uh, that, that depend on, especially agriculture, that, that, that depend on that money, uh, you will have less and less, uh, if, if it continues to go the way it's going.
We'll, we'll have anything to close session to.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll be adjourned tomorrow at one o'clock, and we'll come back here, a couple of things to vote on, we'll talk about the fire rescue people, and then, uh, this equalization stuff we're talking about, so, no other comments, we'll adjourn the meeting till tomorrow at one o'clock.